Okay. So even just before we get started, because of the technical issues of trying to get everything connected in, for anyone who's connecting on Zoom who would like to speak, you won't be, at least at this point, you won't be able to speak, so you're going to have to use the text box to get any messages to us. And either we'll eventually figure out how to get that audio, or we're going to be talking by text messaging. And I know for most people that doesn't bother them, because my kids do that to me all the time. They refuse to answer the phone when I call them, but they will gladly text me all the time. So this is good skill development for anyone who's not young enough to prefer text in the first place. Okay. Welcome to the October 25th meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen. This is a meeting that will be held in hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person, and members of the public may attend in person, and we have several people tonight in the audience. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining, using one of the following options. And the best way to get to those links is to go onto the town website, open up the agenda for tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting, and the links are right at the top of the agenda. And there's actually also a dial-in number if you just want to hear the audio. To, and just for everybody's benefit, for those of you here, this meeting is being recorded. If you are going to talk to us during the meeting, we'll ask you to step up to the podium. That's not to amplify your voice for the people here in the room, but that's to pick up the audio feed so it goes out through Medfield TV. So that's what that's over there for.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'll just tell you that I just went off of the Zoom because I was getting incredible feedback for some reason, so.
Well, maybe somebody's microphone must have been on.
Yeah, somebody's microphone must be on. I'm not getting feedback.
I'm not getting feedback.
Did you have both your speaker and your microphone off?
Everything turned off. I just need to make it stop.
Okay. Well, then, for those who are only here by audio, trust us, Pete Peterson is in fact here, even though he's not on Zoom with his camera. But you can try later on, or try next week. So far, we're in good shape, so. How old is that computer?
Less than two years.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch up the opening, and with no disrespect intended toward our service members, we normally start with a moment to talk, just keep in mind our service members. Tonight, I want to ask you all to keep in mind the people here who work for this town, serve this town. Talking certainly about the senior leadership in this town across all departments, and over the past year, issues some of you have seen, and issues I hope many of you have not seen at all, that we see on the Board of Selectmen, where key leaders of our town departments and other senior leaders within those departments have stepped up to do as good a job as they possibly can to serve this town, within all of the areas that they're in, to maintain high standards of performance, and general integrity in how the town operates. And all that's done on behalf of serving you all as residents of the town. But I'm not just talking about the senior leaders. I'm actually talking about a number of less senior, more junior, and generally younger people in this town across a range of departments, who, as I think about it over this past year in different ways, have all come in, they're doing a great job. They either already have high professional standards, or they're aspiring to develop them. And to the best of their ability, they've helped us out through some issues that have cropped up in this town, again, most of which I hope you haven't even heard about because of the way they've handled that. So tonight, rather than, and with no disrespect to our service members, I'd just like to take a moment of appreciation for those people who are working in our town to help this town be as good a town as it can be. Thank you. And then one administrative note as we start here on an issue at least many of you probably are aware of, there's been an investigation that's gone on around some practices that were taking place in the police department. The investigator's report of that lengthy, multi-month investigation is now available on the town website. There's actually two documents that are available. The first one is an eight-page executive summary that gives the highlights of the investigation, as well as the outcome of that investigation. So I think most people that have an interest in this, at the very least, you can go to the town website, go to the Board of Selectmen page, and you can download that to read the executive summary, so you will have a chance to see what's really been going on over the course of this investigation, and not have to rely on some of the hearsay that's been out there. In addition to that, there's a second document that is the investigator's report itself. It's marked as Part One. If you open it up, I forget, I think there's 146 pages to that report. Don't be put off totally by 146 pages. About two-thirds of it is the exhibits, and the appendices, and the backup information. So it's still, it's a lengthy report, but if you don't get enough from the executive summary to satisfy your curiosity, I think there's a really good chance you'll get enough from reading the investigator's report to answer any questions. And if there are questions beyond that, there's obviously town administrator, the selectmen, the police department that you can inquire. So with that, our first item here was listed as the public hearing for applications to solicit by three employees of Power Home Remodeling. And I think we are saying none of them are actually present. They were probably going to join us by Zoom.
They're going to join us by Zoom, and I do not see anybody in the audience.
So I'll suggest we just continue that until our next meeting. Okay? We're off to a fast.
Oh, hold on. I have Jake Cram on Zoom. He is our Zoom user.
Ah, okay. So Mark bought them just enough time for us to do that. So all three are going to be coming in?
One was coming in to represent.
One is coming in to, okay. So.
Can you hear us?
Hello? Yes, I can hear you. I'm not sure, can you hear me?
Did, Mark, as long as we're taking some time, should I officially declare the public hearing open?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So I will hereby declare this public hearing being open to hear the applications from Jacob Cram, Anthony Saster, and Sean Aguirre from Power Home Remodeling, who are looking for authorization to solicit in town, if they can hear, if they can speak.
Good morning, or good evening, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, they're on Zoom. And here I was thinking we were gonna like, get a fast start out the gate with the first item.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Jake, would you try talking?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me, or?
Can he hear you, obviously? All right. One-way conversation. Three months.
All right.
Exactly. We're gonna get a lot of nodding here.
All right. We're having fun now. I promise you all, we're gonna do our best to make this a much more exciting meeting as we move forward from here, so just work with us. Either that, or find out if they're planning to do anything between now and our next meeting, and just take another run at it. Yeah. So Jake, because, huh? Oh, is he, oh, there he is. Jake, oh, yeah, we could try that. Jake, you don't know sign language or anything, do you, by any chance? No?
Unfortunately.
Okay, he's saying no. Our thought here would be if we're not, would we be interfering, I have to, I have to ask yes or no questions here. So would we be interfering with your plans for your business, or for any of the three of you, if we continued this hearing until next Tuesday, November 1st, which is our next scheduled meeting, where we have a better-than-even chance of having an audio link? Would that, would that work okay for you? So-so. Okay.
Application dates need to start before then.
Yeah, there's, there's at least, I checked that, there's at least one that's October 1st. Yeah, they're all October 1st, I think. They're all October 1st, so. All right. Would, Jake, would you be, are, do you have somewhere else to go, or can you just hang loose for a little bit while we proceed with some other items, and then try to come back to you, see if Medfield TV can get that? He's, he's good with sticking around. We're a lot funnier than this usually. It's usually a lot more fun to be here, so. All right. If you're willing to do that, then we're gonna go to our second item. Well, no, well, are we? So we're gonna suspend it, and then we're gonna reopen it in this meeting, so it's, okay. So at this point, we will suspend the public hearing, and then attempt to reopen it later in this meeting, in the hopes that we have an audio channel.
Do we have an audio channel? Nope.
Okay. This is gonna go down in the history of Medfield as the Board of Selectmen meeting of false hopes. All right. Then, so we're suspending the hearing for now, we'll reactivate it later in the meeting, hoping we can figure out how to do that, so they can do something between now and next Tuesday. Our next item is Rick Fink to request to hold a community event at the gazebo on Wednesday in November 23rd, from 11:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., which will include entertainment, free food and drinks for Medfield schoolchildren following their early release before Thanksgiving. Rick, if you'd like to get up and make a brief presentation, that one, yes. Well, we think it does. We actually think.
Yeah, you basically said it all right there. I just feel like this town could use a quick cam. I feel like there's, I don't know, if you want to outrun a bus stop, or waited in line at a grocery store, just people are kind of grumpy, there's a lot of infighting, right? So I'd like to be a change agent, and bring happiness and joy to all the kids at the Medfield School District. I thought perhaps a great time to do this would be at the half-day, because all these kids like to go uptown, so they're already there, they're looking for things to do. And we could take advantage of that by getting some music, some games, free pizzas, drinks. They bring a canned good, they get a raffle ticket, we do a couple raffles, they win prizes. I've secured some prizes. That's about as far as I've gotten into this. I didn't want to get too far with this great idea until I've gotten your blessing. But that's basically what I'd like to do. Maybe get there a little bit earlier than 11:30 for setup, but, because school ends at 11:45, so from noon to 3:00, I think parents would dig it, too, because they can just feel secure that their kids are, they're in a safe place, they're with me, right? So. And they can go buy their turkeys, and cranberry sauce, and whatever else they gotta do, make the bed for grandma coming to visit, and keeps them out of the house for a little bit. I'm sorry? No, but I was gonna have an axe-throwing contest, and a bonfire, if that's cool with you guys.
Questions?
So who's helping you with this?
I have a small contingency of friends, but, actually, I have a lot of friends, but a small contingency have stepped forward to say they'd like to help. One of my friends is gonna be a face painter, isn't that exciting?
Well, the only reason I ask, if you're gonna have all the kids, and you're gonna have parents just worrying a little bit about supervision, because you're gonna do it kind of where they do the summer concerts in that area?
That's right. Yep. I've talked to some merchants, and they say that the foot traffic of these, these little minions that run around town is probably half of what a typical half-day uptown excursion is.
Okay.
I like to have maybe a 1 to 15, 1 to 20 ratio. If anyone in the public wants to jump on board this splendid idea, you can certainly do so. You could email me, I'll give out my personal email, it's rickfinkjr@gmail. So if you have ideas, or time to help, or money, you know, you can just, you can follow me on Venmo. But that's, that's basically what I do, just.
The inaugural Rick Fink Fun Fest?
I won't make it about me, it's about the kids, so I think that we can just call it. Giving it a name is actually one of the things I would, we gotta kick the tires off, but I feel like it's supposed to just be, you know, like when you were in college, and you came home, and you went to that place on the night before Thanksgiving, and caught up with everyone, and there's that cool vibe? I think all these kids should get to do that. They're like about to launch into a four-day holiday, they're gonna see their relatives. Let's kick it off with some good times. Please. Works for me.
Pete?
So it sounds like a really nice idea. I think that it's great that you're doing it. As an attorney, I always think about issues. Every place that I've been with kids, I've had to be query-tested, and I don't suppose you're gonna bother to query-test all the people that are working there, are you?
I wouldn't know how to do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
But what if we had, I mean, would people assemble? Isn't there a certain number of people that would show up, that would necessitate a police officer on hand? Is that something I would?
Oh, we should tap into it.
A resource I should tap into?
Yeah, you'd have to talk to the chief, I would think, to make arrangements. It's not just gonna happen automatically, so.
Yeah, I figure we have a month, I just came up with this idea a couple days ago. So I figured I could probably wrap up the logistics in like two weeks, and then start promoting it. That's my expectation. And of course, I gave out my email, rickfinkjr@gmail, if anyone has ideas relative to this, or anything else. There's probably little hurdles along the way to make something like this happen.
So it sounds like a great idea to me. This sounds like one of those areas where I think that we should have a checklist for things. I mean, like recently, we said that anytime we're doing something like this, there should be recycling receptacles. Well, that's the sort of thing that you probably wouldn't think about, because you maybe hadn't seen that version of the Board of Selectmen meeting, but this is a perfect situation, I think, Chris, to have that sort of a checklist of things, so that Rick would know what the expectations are, talk to the Board of Health, if there's food.
Yep, it's rickfinkjr@gmail.com.
The junior is a JR, not spelled out.
JR, yep, yep, the only one. That's a good idea, I could get in touch with T-Sark, or We'll Talk. Christine, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Mark?
Yeah, you just kinda passed over the food issue, and that's something, if you're just gonna get pizzas from a local vendor, vendors, that's fine, but anything other than that that was prepared commercially would be a problem. On the other hand, if it's like packaged stuff, like potato chips, or something like that, that's prepackaged, that's fine. But, so you just need to kind of look at that, you may want to just touch base with the Board of Health as well.
Could Gus make cupcakes for us?
That would be a problem.
Okay.
Not because of Gus.
I understand what you're saying, though.
No, it would be a problem.
Also, just a suggestion, either memo the Medfield Employee Merchants Organization and/or the Lions Club might be able to help y'all with.
I think so. I think those memo members might benefit from all this foot traffic, if there's some back-and-forth, like Brothers Market likes the idea of the canned food drive, a lot of kids will run in there to go get something, come back out, get their, get their raffle ticket to go win that gift certificate to the local bookstore.
So, Mark, you bring up a question that I was just looking at Christine, that, like, parents do this all the time, they do hodgepodge potlucks, like, you know, they'll come, and they'll bring cupcakes, and they'll bring whatever. So how is what Rick's doing different than a group of mothers getting together?
I think it's on town land, and town permission.
It's more of an organized function, it's all, it's not like, it's like a sliding thing. Technically, that's a problem, too, but it's below radar, they're just, as a practical matter, you can't really police it. But Board of Health agents, the food people get really concerned about food prep and the conditions under which it's prepared. And there have been, I guess, cases of people getting sick from well-meaning baked goods and things, so.
Learned together here tonight, Rick, I didn't think that was, okay.
No, I mean, especially when, if you're talking baked goods, you're talking about peanut allergies, and all different kinds of allergies, and I know from direct experience with a kid who had peanut allergies, well-meaning people do all sorts of things, that doesn't, if you're not affected by it, you don't even, it doesn't even register.
Maybe we just don't invite those kids, just kidding, just kidding. So Ms. Freiwaller, you and I will follow up, create the punch list, and, okay, I'll reach out tomorrow, then.
You have any other questions, or comments?
No.
So I think you and I already talked about, when I, if you talk to Brothers, they probably, you know, the only issue was the day before, this was my wife's advice, don't use the Brothers' parking lot on the day before Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah, they're actually doing their turkey distribution from the parking lot. I've already talked to them. So I was thinking, you know, that parking lot on, I think it's Park Ave, Park Street, you know, the one behind Avenue?
Oh, the town lot.
Like, just, it's, yeah, it's, it goes around Perez Martial Arts, maybe that could be a nice pickup drop-off.
Brings the police and traffic control and all into play.
But only, these kids are not driving, so it's only, if they're getting out early, and they go to this, it's probably more an issue of when their parents come by to pick them up, as opposed to parent, unless, maybe if you got really good food, the parents are gonna come, too, but I think, it sounds like you're targeting kids.
Yeah, middle school.
The only, and that was, that's where I was gonna go, I would, but as, the first time that you're doing it, and you're figuring out a lot of things for the first time, and it is the day before Thanksgiving, and now we're gonna be piloting checklists to make sure that you do things right, the right way, or that we know how to get people to do things the right way, I was gonna suggest that rather than saying it's open to all students, that if it's a middle school thing, market it that way, so that everybody kind of, that would make it, it would be very hard to have something that would be age-appropriate for first grade to 12th grade anyway, so it'd be better to target, if it's the middle school that you want to target, that sort of makes sense.
Yeah, I didn't know if like high school kids would want to hang out with Dale Street kids, but I did talk to the teen librarian, and she has good connections with a lot of high school students that do community ser, there's community service opportunities here, also, I mean, we need face painters, and other things.
For getting them to volunteer to help you, that would make sense at the high school level, but you're not even really gonna middle school, you're gonna have fourth and fifth graders, I guess, or?
The Dale kids.
Yeah.
Right. Those are the ones that go uptown.
Right. So all I'm getting at is, I would probably try to target narrowly, or unless you have a good way to get some sense of interest, you know, if it's half the school population that shows up.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, we're not gonna go crazy, like, I'm pulling back on the private techniques and things, because we just want to see how this works out, and then, you know, we'll learn from it, but we're gonna make it manageable. You know, maybe if, if there is a large contingency of kids of all ages that want to come, you know, we'll manage it the best we can, and.
Well, that's the part that scares me, for us to approve something that we're just kind of take a wing at it, that's, that's what, I understand it's experimental, we haven't done it before, but I'm not comfortable where all the, all the variables are wide open, and it's like, well, whatever happens, happens.
Well, I feel like my prediction is, the kids from Dale like to go uptown, that's their big coming-of-age thing in this town, and that's really the audience that I'm tapping into. They're already going to all of these coffee shops, and bookstores, and gift shops, and whatnot. Here's a place that's got some music, their ears will perk up, they'll smell the free pizza.
Right. So if you're targeting Dale, and some kids from sixth grade or something from like middle school show up, that's fine. If you target fourth through eighth grades, that might be, that's half, that's half our town's school population, that's the thing I'd be worried about.
Ms. Freiwaller, could you put bouncers on that list? We might have to.
My thought was, if you're meeting next week anyway, kind of give them a checklist to run through, not only Chris, but the police chief, et cetera, and follow up on it next week.
That's right.
What about school principals? Should they be tipped off on this stuff, too?
Is there any harm in doing that? Is there any harm in doing that?
No, I mean, is it, should, should they know where their kids are going after school, or is it, I don't know?
Sounds like a good idea.
I don't think it hurts to educate them.
Because communication's always a good thing, right?
I don't know how you'd market to the kids they have, you don't tell them what you're doing, so.
Right. Okay. Cool.
So we'll, I think we're approving it, we have a motion?
Are we gonna approve it, or are we gonna come back next week and approve it? What's your pleasure?
I'm okay, well, I'm okay with approving it, principal, recognizing there'll, there'll be some further discussion about exactly how you have to do it.
Exactly.
And what I'm, what I'm getting at, Rick, is, we could push you off for another week, and that gives you one last week to get ready for it if you don't know whether it's approved. And that's one thing to say, well, I don't know if I have to have recycling bins out, or if I'm only gonna target fourth and fifth grade, or if I am gonna have pizza, but it's, it's nothing.
Well, I like the idea of Christine and I touching base tomorrow, getting that punch list, and then I can just start reaching out to the merchants, and getting some of those foundational elements of this thing, the safety first, of course, the cleanliness issues, and then.
So if we defer the formal approval until next week, then you've done that, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, sure, you guys are in charge.
It's, if that's.
I have to come back again next week? I mean, I get you, I'm sorry, I get you.
Be thankful it's in the same location next week.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
I'm neutral either way. Pete, you're preferring to push it off.
It just seems more logical to me, but.
No, I get, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll, this gives you a week to do the punch list, to come back, and if there's any other questions or concerns, but, I mean, in the spirit of it, I support it 100%, I think, as a citizen coming forward, with everything he opened with, to bring this town together, to have everyone just start reeling, we're a tight community, I, that, that gets fantastic.
So here's what I think I'm hearing. Philosophically, we're on board with what you're trying to do, so you don't have to worry about, do we think it's a bad idea? It's a good idea. The specifics in terms of us formally approving this should, if we're prudent, probably be tied into some of the specific provisions, like getting feedback from the police chief on safety considerations, like getting a checklist that we've made sure that we've got things. I don't think we're gonna have issues with food, because it sounds like, if you stay within the guidelines that Mark provided, we're gonna be fine. You may want to be, you may want to put more thought into what your actual focus for who you're targeting, relative to the variability, what the crowd size could be, is important. So you're not gonna run up against the idea of us telling you it's a bad idea.
Yeah, right, just get some answers.
Okay?
I like that.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Great, thanks, Rick.
All right, sorry for taking up so much time, gotta go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake said that data, November 1st next week is fine, he'll come back, and we can do the hearing, then.
See, that's what happened, was you're not funny enough in these meetings, people start dropping off, because they think they're wasting their time. All right, well, then we are, we're moving ahead. Item number three, residents of.
Now you have to continue the public hearing.
Thank you, thank you, my conscience of public hearing. So we are going, this is not a vote, I just declare, right? The suspended public hearing will remain suspended until we reopen the public hearing on November 1st, so once again, here, those applications.
At 7:00.
Hmm?
At 7:00.
At 7:00.
7:00 p.m. on November 1st.
The meeting at 7:00. Can't promise there will be.
No, it'll be, anytime after that.
Anytime after that. Okay, so at 7:00 on November 1st, one week from today, same place, same time, same station.
Volume's gonna work.
And Jake says you're pretty funny.
Good, I don't have to work on that, okay, that's good. All right. Item number three, residents of Deerfield Drive, a private way to discuss concerns with their road.
I need to recuse myself from this.
Okay. Selectman Peterson is recusing himself.
Why? I'm sorry, what? Why are you recusing yourself?
I presented at the Castle Hill Soror Association.
You, you do, or you did?
You did.
I did.
Oh, did, okay.
Welcome.
Apologies, I'm not gonna be as funny as, as Rick, so, just to set expectations. My name is Jen Troutman, I live on Deerfield Drive, and I'm here to kick off some comments for our neighborhood about some things, concerns we have about our road. Deerfield Drive, if you're not familiar with it, is off of North Street, it's near the Steeplechase Course. The road is about 50 feet wide, about a quarter mile long, there are 12 houses on it, and the neighborhood was constructed 85-ish, from what I can tell from records, and it was previously called, the subdivision was called Castle Hill Estates. This, earlier this summer, my neighbor called DPW to request some repairs in the road that had become evident. We have a pothole extending about halfway across the road, and there is another pothole, it's kind of caving around, one of the manhole covers labeled drain. This, earlier this summer, my neighbor called DPW to request some repairs in the road that had become evident, we have a pothole extending about halfway across the road, and there is another pothole, it's kind of caving around, one of the manhole covers labeled drain. So she called to find out about how do we get on the list to get these things repaired, and she was told that our road is private, and there would be no repairs. This was news to all of us, nobody who lives in the neighborhood, and any recent residents, or people who have lived in the neighborhood since it was constructed, knew that it was private, there is no signage indicating that it's private, the maps that we have seen attached or deed don't say that it's private, it didn't come up in title searches for those of us who moved in the neighborhood recently, who have a recollection of that, so this was new information. I went and spoke with the town planner, Ms. Raposa, I said, how do I find out if our road is private, and she pulled a binder off a shelf behind her and said, I don't see that that road was accepted. She followed up with me and said, after reviewing planning board decisions from back in the day, she said, none of the decisions required the road to remain private, there is also no record of the road being accepted as public. She recommended that we bring the road forward for acceptance, and attached a multi-page document of things we would need to do to get that done, we'd need to hire an engineer, and it's very complicated for a LA person. She did comment that the road needs to be an excellent condition for the town to take ownership of it, which is why developers themselves bring them forward after completion of the road. I then had a conversation with this, with Ms. Trueller about how we would address this with you, she kindly offered to look into the issue herself and get back to me, she came back and said that Town Council recalls that there is an HOA to manage the road, none of us have any idea about an HOA to manage the street and the maintenance of it. So for the past 30 years, the town has also been maintaining this road, and not just by, not just through snow plowing, for which I understand the town previously accepted an MGL statute to plow private ways, thankfully, but the town has also removed damaged curbing, replaced curbing in some areas, they've filled cracks all up and down the road, they've repaired damage around storm, storm grates and manhole covers, similar to exact problem we have now. We've benefited from street sweeping, so all of that's been happening for over 30 years, so I don't know why now there's not a continuation of those things, especially when we have some significant issues that are going to be exacerbated when, when snow falls. We're told we need to bring the road forward, and the road must be in excellent shape, but the condition the road is in is due to how it has been maintained for the past 30 years by the town, not by any private residents. Had the original owners known at the time that their road was, had not been accepted, they would have taken action to bring it forward when the road was still in good condition. So our question is, when the town approves a development, does it have no obligation to look out for the residents and taxpayers, current and future, by requiring a developer to bring the road forward at the completion of their subdivision, or to require that an HOA be established for street maintenance? How does the town release a bond to a developer without those things in place? And, because what's the incentive for a developer to care about doing that, and make the road private, once they build and leave? It's the residents who are kind of stuck with this deal. So, based on the, the town's maintenance of the past 30 years, none of us ever knowing, not knowing about any HOA that exists, our position is that the town should repair these issues and, and work with us on, on the road going forward, and I know my other neighbors have comments as well.
Hi, I'm Lauren Beatleswacker, I live at 6 Deerfield Drive, I just want to say that was awesome, and you said that so much better than the rest of us, but there are 18 children under the age of 18 on that street, we also have elderly parents on that street, it would be a hazard if the street didn't get plowed, and in its current condition, it would be hazardous for you to plow it, so this is a real, serious dire situation, I would be very, very upset if, God forbid, something happened to my children and an emergency vehicle wouldn't be able to access them. So I'd like for that to be in consideration, especially of this request, I, we would not have moved into that house if we had known that it was supposed to be an HOA. We had no idea that, and we moved here seven years ago in 2015, we had no idea that it was a private road, it is not in any of the documents. We wouldn't have chosen that house, there were plenty of other houses on the market, this was back when you didn't have to wrestle someone to get a house in Medfield, so I really think that this is, it's a kind of a who said, who said, he said, she said, but we're coming at this with the spirit of very positive intent, of truly not knowing that this was a private road, and it would have impacted our decision, and I really hope that you consider the 18 children under the age of 18 that live on this street, thank you.
Hi, I'm Neil Isaacson, I live at 15 Deerfield Drive, I've lived there for 30 years, I bought the land from the original developer, I built my house there. Never was there any mention of it being a private road. The broker that utilized to buy the land was Ann Thompson, who I know, you probably know and are aware of. For those who don't know, Ann Thompson was a figure in this town, she was a select woman in this town for a very, very long time, and a real estate broker on the side. She made, she made no mention of it being a private road, there is no HOA fee, HOA for the road, there never has been, there is a sewer HOA, which we're all aware of. I have my title search in my pocket 30 years ago, when I bought the land and I put a mortgage on it, and then I got a construction loan, and there was, there was title search done then as well. It references every easement, it references the sewer HOA, there's information that came in from Bob Rechner, who managed the sewer, never, ever was there a mention of it being a private road. So I would like to understand, Mr. Town Council, where you believe there's an HOA, or why you believe there's an HOA for the road, if that's okay for me to ask.
Well, it's, before we start having questions, if, let's hear statements first, and then I'd be more happy to have questions come up.
So, look, I, my kids grew up, played out in the street, it is a travesty right now, the kids are going to get hers. Like you've heard, the town's plowed it, the town's repaired it, the town's cleaned it, police have been up and down the street, I got hassled by police for plowing my driveway. There are a lot of things that, over 30 years, were demonstrated to be not a private way, and to find out and to hear that it's a private way, and that we have to now do something about it, it doesn't make any sense to me. It seems to me that somewhere along the line, somewhere within the town, a ball was dropped, and it feels like we are being considered guilty until proven innocent, and that's not the way it should work here, right? We want people to come together, let's fix this, 30 years, and I am not planning on moving, my daughter lives in the town, she bought a house in the town, she's a teacher in Dale Street, she wants to move back into this house, let's fix it, let's do the right thing, thank you.
Anyone else? You wanna, you wanna hear, you wanna, did you?
Well, I'd just like to clarify the term private road, or private way. Basically, you have public roads which are accepted roads, there's a statutory process for doing that, and that's the only way that roads become public in Massachusetts, it's not limited to this town, it's a statewide statute. Private roads are anything that's not a public road, so you have to look back to when the subdivision was created and determine what the intent was at that time, and I'm frankly, I don't know that. It might have been constructed with intent that the road be accepted by the town, in which case, everything would have been bonded with the developer to ensure that the road was built to standards. If, on the other hand, it was intended to be a private road, it wouldn't have been bonded, because the public would, the, the public would never be taking it over, typically, there would have been requirement to set up, to protect future owners, there would have been a, a, an associate, the developer would have been required to set up an association to take care of that going forward, and there would have been legal documents prepared and recorded, that was all predated me. And, so, you basically have a road that's in legal limbo, as near as I can tell, there's no legal bar to it becoming a public road, but there's a whole lot of things financially and politically that would have to, a whole process that would have to go through to do that, which includes upgrading the road, preparation of what's called an acceptance or layout plan, and then, planning, the, both the, the select board and the planning board would have to hold hearings, and then ultimately, it would go to town meeting, and then it would come back to the Board of Selectmen to acquire the property, how, which probably would require a taking in this case, because the original developer's no longer around. And I'm just the messenger on this, but technically, legally, the town, as in all municipalities, by statute are foreclosed from expanding taxpayer funds on roads that are not public roads, with certain limitations. One is the snow plowing that was referred to, the other is minor repairs, again, if the town's accepted a statute and put regulations in place to enable that to take place, so that's kind of an overview, okay?
Hi, Janine Wilson, 14 Deerfield Drive, we've lived in our home for 30 years now, and for 30 years, I agree, the town has been taking care of it, they have done a lot of work, and lots of the damage has been from the plows, because for some reason, they don't know how to sometimes plow the end of our street, cause it's a circle, but a lot of the damage on the curbing and everything has been from the plows. So it has been maintained by the town for 30 years, you can drive up and see the work that they've done in the cutting out at manhole covers, and, you know, when they sank, and lifting them back up again. I went back through the Registry of Deeds, because when we bought our property 30 years ago, and then we built a home, nothing was ever told, we were told about the easement on our property, but, and we were told about the sewer assessment, that we were going to end up paying, but there was never a homeowners association for our property, and there was never any mention of it being a private way. And I don't know why, all of a sudden, it is, but I did go back to the Registry of Deeds, and I went back to when the road was starting to be built on, and the road was starting to be discussed with the town, and they were getting approvals, approval to put the road in, and there was never any mention then, in the deeds or any other paperwork at the Registry of Deeds, about it being a private road, and there was one mention about a bond for the road, but never in any of the paperwork did it mention that it was going to be a private way.
Anyone else? Mark, do you have any further comments relative to what you've heard so far?
Yeah, by default, it's a public way, unless and until the process is followed through and it becomes a public way. And again, as I said, only then is the town enabled legally to expend any significant funds to upgrade it. So, and the, so, I don't know what went, what went on back then, as far as, it was a, development ebbs and flows, that was a, a development boom, there was quite a bit of controversy at the time, that that original proposal for development in that area, it then was cut back to what, what you have now, there were legal arrangements agreed to by whoever was in charge, the powers that be, if you will, on the part of the town with the developer at that time, that has generated what you have there. I haven't done an exhaustive title search, not that that would establish anything, other than, as I said, if there'd been an agreement that it was going to remain a private way, and documents were put on record that formalized that agreement, and I don't believe that was the case, I think it was just left up in the air. Clearly, the sewer was always intended to be private, because water in sewer back then was opposed to pump stations.
You previously said that, that if a, can you explain the bond, that you said that if a road was going to be built to be accepted, there would be a bond, but if it was going to be private, that there would not be, could you just, I'm a layperson, can you explain a little bit what that means?
So in most cases with subdivisions, you're creating a road and infrastructure, and, and it's generally contemplated that, that the public, they're gonna become public to municipalities, which means municipality's gonna accept ownership and be responsible for maintenance and repair. And to ensure that the road gets properly constructed under those circumstances, the subdivision statute requires a developer to provide certain sureties to the town that that gets done, so they don't just half-develop it and split.
Right.
So it starts with a covenant, which is a lien on all the property, and then the developer has the option at any point to post one or another type of sureties that they'll complete the work. It can be anything from a surety company bond, which it was frequently used way back then, could be a bank, a tri, a tripodate agreement with the lender, so there's, there's several different options that are open to the developer to post surety. So if you're researching this, I'd go back and find the subdivision, the planning board's decision approving the subdivision, which should be on record at the registry, and see what that says, and then go from there.
There, I have seen records of all that, there was surety, I've, I've seen the release of the bond, the holdout, there's conversations about, like, we need these final plantings to release the, you know, on the road, to release the final bit of the bond, which is.
That does, that's, okay, so that's fine, but that just means that at that point in time, the road has been built to the town's standards.
Yes.
But then something has to hap, more things have to happen before the road becomes accepted.
Right.
And it's not unique at that point, that the developer just takes off without doing the final things in terms of preparing the acceptance plan, and pushing it along to make sure that the town, the road gets accepted by the town. It would not be unique to Deerfield if that were the case, but all that has to happen, typically, the last, the last step is that the developer, as I said, prepares what's called a layout plan, or an acceptance plan, it lays out legally where the, it's called, they, they put bounds in, concrete bounds, and show where the road is. So that's a, a title issue, that, that's, so that that plan can go to record at the registry and establish the parameters of the public way, and then typically, there's also, either combined with that, or as a separate plan, what's called an ASBILT, that shows all the infrastructure, storm drains, and utilities, and all that sort of thing. And that's like the final step, and that's not uncommon at that point, that, by that point, the, the developer, particularly if it's been a boom period, or it's not a local developer, it's somebody that just came into town for a quick project, they don't do it, and how effective the follow-up was back then, I don't know. Obviously, not that effective if those documents were not generated, so.
One other question, you said that the town can make, in addition to plowing, can make minor repairs to private ways, what constitutes a minor repair?
Patches, like patch, coal patch, stuff like that, but again, even then, the, the town technically is supposed to accept a statute, another statute, and put a set of regulations in place that, that specifies what work they would do under those circumstances. So, you know, it, it could be you've been the beneficiary over the years of the prior DPW, and just trying to help people out, and just doing things, and.
We're, we're not gonna get anywhere if we're gonna try and debate whether it's private or public, let's, let's stipulate that it's private.
Right now, it's private.
It's private, it's private, right? It's been operated as, as if it's been public for 30 years. There are people that bought houses on the street, including myself, who bought the land, never knew that it was private, so, so that is what it is. What, what we're asking is for the town to do the right thing here, and, and let's get the process going for accepting it, to make it a public road.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, so there's two things that I'm just curious about, cause it's, I reached out to Christine, it's okay, this is all new to me here, and I do have a younger brother who's in real estate, so I called him this morning, and we were talking about private ways, and what happened, so, one of the things I brought to his attention is, so, I know when 17 Deerfield went up, I, I saw that they had HOA, and there's a little listing for 650 annually, so is that 650?
Yes.
You, every, so everyone has an HOA?
That is just the sewer.
It's not, it's not a traditional, it's just a sewer.
It's just a sewer, 100% sewer.
Okay, and so then, the next question to me was, well, if it's a private sewer, under a road, that's a private road over a private sewer, that the town would not typically do?
It's not just on our street, though, that sewer is not just on our street, it's 22 houses all around that area.
Goes down North Street as well.
Yeah.
And so the pump itself. Because there was a legal arrangement that allowed the developer to put a private main line in North Street.
But that's separate from the road, like, the sewer is separate from the road, it's not just the, like, the sewer issue, it's not just intrinsic to our street, it's, it's. It's not just the, like, the sewer issue, it's not just intrinsic to our street, it's double the house in the neighborhood.
Installed by this developer?
Yes.
No, it is.
Well, I mean, so it's kind of the catch-22. Again, he's in real estate, and he says like, a lot of things happen, it doesn't make it, unfortunately, you're in a situation, you are, and that the builder was able to do what the builder did, and so you're, I mean, you've been there the whole time, right? So the builder, he sold you on certain things, and whether he was transparent or not, he, you are on a private road right now. And, and the work that was done was done to benefit him, which then in turn benefited you guys. The other question I had asked Christine is, and we don't know the answer to this yet, but again, my younger brother, being a real estate attorney, said, well, final from the residents, have they been getting a reduced, no, they're not getting reduced, nope. Okay.
I wish we were, but no.
So, I mean, again, I'm just asking questions because when seeing this, it, I have been watching how the town does over the years. You'll see a development go in, and then you'll hear that, okay, we accepted it. It's odd that yours has been for 30 years.
Yes.
It hasn't, it was never put forth, and the question would be, was it ever the intent where, you know, why? And, and, you know, we're not going to solve that tonight, but I think we've got to start doing some, some digging to see.
But the road is in serious disrepair, and I don't think the plows are going to come up the road in its current state. So like, this is a timely issue, because I'm, like, for me personally, I'm very concerned about the plows. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's an acidic thing there, obviously, but like, the plows are going to be a prominent condition, so if the snowbirds don't have a way, like, if they're last year, what's going to happen? Because there is a pretty-
Well, but I think that, I think the debate we have, if it's as urgent a situation, is who has the ball to fix it? And so that doesn't-
I hope it's not as urgent as you're painting it, but the point is, we're talking about a private road, so-
They need to have them before-
Well, but, but the real issue here is who has the ball. Mark.
Yeah, and, and I hate to tell you that, that a private road and a homeowners association, that the homeowners association is a prerequisite. It's not. It's just, as I indicated earlier, if you're going to, if you anticipate a road is going to be private, then you require the developer to set up the homeowners association and generally provide some funding for protection down the road. In the absence of that, the law is, is clear that the abutters to the road are responsible for its maintenance. So, that's what it is.
Morrie School A, Director of Public Works. I've been here for about six and a half years, and prior to my tenure, I'm not sure what, what's transpired. I mean, you guys have been there a long time. To let you know, when we street sweep, it's because we are required by Mass DEP because of stormwater management. Anything that's connected to our waterways, we're responsible for. So as far as cleaning those, make sure the debris doesn't go into the basins, that's, that's one of the responsibilities. It's not that we do it once a year to all the private developments that's connected to our waterways and to our drainage systems. As far as repairs, if the, our, if our guys do plow it, because over the years, there was special legislation that allows towns to plow in emergency situations, we do, if we do damage something, I talked to my guys over the years, they have repaired the damages that they created from the plows, okay? But it doesn't mean that we maintain the roads. And that's in the special legislation, I believe, that we can make those minor repairs. As far as since, like I said, since my tenure, I do not recollect any kind of maintenance in any of the roadways that, for Deerfield Drive. Now, again, before, before I came here, I'm not sure what transpired, but I don't have any, any data for that, so.
Do you have the water cover, the, I'm sorry, yes. Just so you know, I'm Kate Jacobson. I live, I'm the newest resident. I'm the one that actually called to ask about the repairs when I first moved in. I also have the large portion of the 18 children. I have five children, so safety does remain a concern for me, and I also have a chronic heart condition. So of course, knowing the ambulance can get down the road at any given time is really important to me. Let me go back to, so what my question was, is the larger sort of sinkhole, I guess you could call it, for lack of a better term, is around the water cap, cover? I'm not sure, but it says water across it. So then who, if it is at risk of damaging the water pipeline, who then is responsible for that? You had mentioned that you're, you keep track of the water.
So if there's, if there's an emergency situation with, with the water or the sewer, we are, we will respond, only because it's connected to our system. But the, in a private way, the responsibility does fall onto the homeowners association or the homeowners themselves. But we would go in to secure the area because it does affect the water and the sewer that that's connected to.
Because I, if I do believe, and I could be wrong, I walk by it every day to get to the bus, but the, one of the, the larger sort of sinkhole areas is connected to the water main, the water cap. I'm not sure if I'm using the right-
So there's, there's gate valves.
Okay.
And there's sewer manhole covers.
Yeah.
And there's drainage covers.
Okay.
So those are-
The drainage?
Yeah.
It's, and then that's where it's sinking in. So my concern is, are we making whatever's underneath the road worse by having it not repaired? Are we making a smaller issue turn into something else?
It's, it's more the road, it's just the cover, it's not the, it's not the, the manhole, the manhole itself, it's just the cover at the top.
I see.
So it just needs, that would need to be probably re-bricked and have the cover replaced, they call them, the castings would need to be replaced.
And the DPW does that, or the HOA?
It would be, it would be, it would be the private development, if you will use that term. It would be the responsibility of, of the homeowners or the homeowners association if there was one set up.
If I could just give you a brief, really quick outline of the street, because I think you're thinking that when we bought our home 30 years ago, we bought it from the developer, we didn't. The street went in, in like, late 70s, early 80s, I want to say, and one of the, there was two people that were doing the development. Mr., oh.
Hill?
No, I'm trying to think of the person that owned the land that we used to be on the board here. You know who I mean.
Yeah, I can't think of the name.
The one who you bought, Borelli bought the land from, Mr. Sylvia. He was one of the people that agreed to allow the street to go in because it backed up to his property, and so he bought one of the lots. So they went and they allowed the street to go in, and then at one point, they asked that the street be able to be extended even further, and the town gave them the okay, with the exception that they had to give the town 9.2 acres that's behind my house, and then a small portion across from my driveway was donated to the town also to get the okay to extend the street. So some of the homes were built on the street, and then the extension of these four lots, they weren't built by the contractor or the builder, really five lots, because of, hers also Caitlin's, but the builder, one of the builders ended up passing away after we had bought ours. We ended up buying ours along with Neil and two other people, and we bought the vacant lots. And at that time, one of the people doing the property, he's the one that passed away. So he had nothing to do with selling us the property or anything. He had nothing to do with the building of our homes. We all did our own contracting. So I do know that there was a bond, but, you know, Mr. Sylvia was in on this whole project also, keeping a close eye on it, and there was, honestly, I swear to God, I can't find anything, so saying it's a private way. So I think the big thing is to go forward from here, how do we, what do you need from us so that we can get the town to take over this street? What is the steps that we have to do? What do you need from us? Is there any documentation I have to go back through the registry of deeds and get for you? You know, just let us know what we have to do so that we can move forward on this, because that cover is sinking. It's become, we have a cone, traffic cone there, because it's become, it's pretty sunk, and somebody's going to lose a tire on it, so.
So whatever I have to say here is just me using common sense, or maybe not common sense, maybe it's not sense, but let me at least start, and then we have people either here or people that we need to bring into this that will have more expertise around how to answer your specific question. I think my question has to do with what's the full issue that we're dealing with here? Is, right now, you have a privately owned sewer system, and you're talking about bringing the road that's over that sewer system into compliance that would, to the point where the town would accept it as, as a public way?
Well, there's 22 houses in that pumping station. It's the pumping station which is on North Street. It's not on our street, it's on North Street.
I could careless, I'm thinking you've got, I'm picturing, unless this is not how it's set up, I'm picturing that there's sewer pipes underneath this road-
Yeah.
-that you own, that you have to maintain, which means if anything happens, you have to get through that road potentially to fix those pipes. And so as we're, I'm trying to understand, so this is a sterile discussion about a road that the town would take as a public way. It's a good thing Mo's here. The town would take this as a public way, but then when your sewer system falls apart and you have to go in and repair it, and you have to go through the road, what's, huh?
It's already on the North Street.
Yeah, it's under North Street, it's under Farm Street, and we've been trying to get the town to take over the pumping station, too.
What's that got to do with the street that we're talking about?
So Deerfield Drive, Deerfield Drive has sewer underneath their so-called private way, okay? It does go out to North Street, to Farm Street, out to Blacksmith.
Okay.
But we're talking about just Deerfield Drive right now. We're not talking about the sewer system.
Okay, but what I think I hear you saying is your private sewer system already is on North Street and going out.
It's, it's connect, it's, it's after the pumping station, it's connected, so Deerfield Drive is connected to that lift station. It's a, it's a gravity line-
Right.
And then it changes over to a force main.
Who owns the pipes under North Street?
Under North Street, it's a private sewer, but it's not, it's part of the HOA collectively.
Right, no, that was, but that's not where I'm coming from. I'm saying, so North Street is a public way.
Yes.
There are private pipes underneath it. What's the protocol? If a pipe, if a private, if a private sewer pipe springs a leak?
The HOA would be responsible for that.
And so when the HOA has to go in through the road to get there, who pays for the road?
It's not a great situation, but it'd be a public-private kind of, kind of deal there, that they would be responsible for the repair and whatever it takes to do that, but they would have to get permits from the town to do that as well.
Because that's the same thing we're setting up here, on Deerfield Way, is another thing where we're talking about a public, well, I guess what I'm really asking is, is that the, that's the whole issue, is how do we get Deerfield to be a public way and presumably would then be managed in the same way that the private sewer under North Street is being managed? That's the issue.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Because we've been trying for a couple of years to get the town to take over the sewer system as well.
Well, so that's why I'm asking, what, what are we actually talking about here?
That's where I thought you were going, so that's why I wanted to say that.
We're not talking about the road.
No, there's no, right now, because they're connected. That's, I don't want to talk about one thing and then have it, they're not. I don't understand that. I don't. I don't know what you're trying to get, I guess, I don't know what you're actually asking the town for. This is, we're not just the road people, we're the town people. So I kind of want to understand what the issue is. We'll go there first, then, gentlemen at the podium.
Going back to 2010 was my first attendance at a meeting with Mr. Rechner on behalf of the homeowners association, attempting to get the town at that time to take over the pump station. And those discussions were not productive, the thing lapsed, it was revived again, I believe around 20, was Mo? Around 2018. And frankly, the 800-pound gorilla in the room is that the pump station is way beyond, originally, we were talking about, there was no, no bonding set up or any kind of a funding to replace that, that pump, which is, again, something that historically would be done if you were going to take over a pump station, a private pump station. That was never, the mechanism was never put in place. By the time we started the discussions in 2010, the thing was, had some age and needed some upgrades. By 2018, it was well beyond its useful life, the technology is obsolete, and you're talking serious money to replace that pump station. The rest of it, as far as the mains, the pipes and all, I don't know what the material is, and if they're properly installed, they may not be a problem.
You said, you've used 50 years, you've talked about our general sewer system, and it's a 50-year.
Well, I know, we've been in discussion with the Water and Sewer Board, with Mr. Rechner about, if I can just use this. We've been in discussion with, with Mr. Rechner, the HOA, with the Water and Sewer Board, that's continuing on to discuss what improvements are needed before the town would consider to take over or even, you know, take over that sewer system. But as I understand, Deerfield Drive sewer is part of that, that sewer system. So it's a little convoluted because if you're looking for acceptance of the roadway, it's, the sewer system is part of that roadway, but it's also part of the bigger picture. So that's, that's what you were getting at.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Right. So it becomes a difficult situation with, if the town considered to take the road over, if improvements were made to the road, then another, the other issue is the sewer, which, again, with the Water and Sewer Board, we've been discussing it.
So historically, we typically, when we accept the road, we take outright ownership, what's called a fee interest in the road, so we own all the way down and all the way up. You don't have to do it that way. You can also do basically a right-of-way. We have some limited situations where we have done just a right-of-way.
It's on Frary, I think it's like that, sorry.
Kettle Pond Estates comes to mind because of the title issues there. So hypothetically, legally, we could accept just the road, a right-of-way over the road, to have the road, maintain the road, and leave the subsurface. It's not ideal because then we don't have the right to go down ourselves if we need to. It could be done, but again, so to go back to the questions that were raised, in terms of what condition the road has to be placed in order physically to accept that for somebody else to address, Mo or you folks, legally, we would have to prepare a layout plan. The engineering is in the thousands of dollars to do that from scratch, but that's required because that will go to record ultimately to establish the bounds of the roadway. Then, as I said, that's a major expense, and then beyond that, it's just a bunch of, it's a hearing process, Board of Selectment, Planning Board, town meeting, votes, ultimately the Board of Selectment would then have to act, and the last step is acquiring title. So in this case, because of the fact that the owner, we'll say, is gone, we'll say the developer reserved the ownership of the road, or even if he didn't, that means the ownership would be in the abutters. So we'd have to have each one of the abutters sign a release to the town in return for the town accepting the road and the maintenance of the road to ensure we didn't get sued for a taking. And I've done that, and it, again, that can be done. It's a pain in the neck, but it can be done.
You're waiting?
Hi, I'm Jim Young. I'm the senior statesman on the street. I've only been there for 34 years. When I bought my land, I bought it from Scott Hughes, from Dover Country Properties. I was told that we would only have to pay for the maintenance of the pumping station until the road was completed, all, all the homes were built out, and then the town was going to take it over. I was never told that Deerfield Drive is a private road. I've looked on my plot plan, I've looked on everything, and there isn't anything on there in the building permit that says we're on a private road.
I'm going to, I'm going to inject a comment here that actually ties into your comment and a couple of others. We have an obli, there's an issue here around the town not guaranteeing what you did or didn't do properly, or what you did or didn't know, or what was properly or improperly represented in a private transaction. So that my concern here, for a while at least, you're going to hear me as the skeptic, and so I'll just let you know. And I'll explain why I'll be the skeptic, and don't take that as a final position, and don't take that as a final, there's no way to fix this. But I really am not moved by arguments that say, gee, I talked to the developer, and the developer told me this, and now I've learned it's that. And town, I want you to indemnify me for the things that didn't go the way I thought they should go in a private transaction. they should go in a private transaction. If you go there, we're not going to, the town does not have any role in being the, the savior of last resort for you having not done what you in retrospect wish you had done in a private transaction. So if we're talking about what people who sold you property told you about what the town was going to do and there is no legal basis to have relied on that, your issues are either with whoever told you that, the lawyers you relied on to help you get through that transaction, they are not with the town. And I will be, you just understand that. If those are the arguments you're making, you're going to be wasting your time with me because I have an obligation not only to you as taxpayers, but to everybody else in this town as a taxpayer, not to put the town into a position where suddenly we become an unpaid insurance company for every legal liability issue that a private, that comes out of a private transaction. So I want you to know where I'm coming from. It's not to be mean, it's just that that's, to me, is a guardrail that we can't cross. So if, keep going, but I just need, you just need to understand that. Those arguments aren't going to move me. I will feel bad for you. I've made some dumb moves with private transactions too that I wish you hadn't done, so we all do.
Colin is dumb right now.
Well, I, no, I was calling my moves dumb.
Well, it's kind of the implication in what you were saying was kind of implying that we were dumb for not, why would I even think to say, oh, this is a private road? Like, that would never occur.
I wasn't calling you dumb, I would easily call myself dumb for mine. But if, if it would help, so my point, my point is, you don't make an argument that the town should be bailing you out on information you got in a private transaction that you subsequently either found out wasn't true or wasn't exactly what you thought it was going to be. We're not in, we're not, we can't be in that business.
We're not looking for the town to indemnify us. We're looking for the town to take over the street the same way it does all the other public roads in the town.
That's great, except I want to understand whether the sewer is inside or outside this whole problem you have.
Look, the sewer is underneath the road. There's no doubt about it.
Right, right, right.
We're saying it's separate because we've been trying to get the sewer accepted for my.
So you're actually, so what I'm, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is, you're asking, so what you've just told me is, no, actually, we're trying to get two things done, but we would rather just talk about the road with you and we'll talk about the sewer system somewhere else. And what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get my arms wrapped around, because those two things represent a financial obligation that the town, that I think you're asking the town to take on. So for me, the fact that one's a road and one is, one's a sewer, I could care less. It's just a cost to the town that we, we actually cover for many other people that live here. So it's not like it's an unprecedented cost, it's something that we cover. So this idea that it's important, you know, that you want to only talk about a piece of it, I don't understand the strategy when I'm trying to solve, figure out how to solve the whole problem.
That's correct. There's no strategy to just focus on the road. If we can get the whole thing done, let's do that.
Well, but, so once we figure out what that whole thing is, that whole thing is going to have a cost. And then there's going to be an issue of who covers that cost in order to get that whole thing to the point of acceptance. That's what I'm trying to ultimately get. And then there might be yet another question that says, if you don't like the answer to that, what options can the town make available to actually make that palatable? But we're not anywhere close to that yet because I'm just trying to figure out what the whole thing is. Okay?
Yeah. That issue has been going on for a long time. Before my time, I haven't been part of them, but you said, like, 2010 and then 2018 and now it's 2022.
So I would.
So I don't know how long it's going to take for that to evolve, to some kind of final decision. And in the meantime, the road issue is, is more top of mind and right in front of us because of the damage that we spoke about. And I think the references to our neighbors who have owned the neighborhood for a long time and sharing that they were never told this, that a private road, that's just one aspect of this. I think they're just sharing that in addition to the fact that there isn't a signage, there is no marking, the town has been doing things with the road, showing maintenance for all of these years, like that, though, all of those things wrapped together, kind of, how would we have any concept? There's no way to find out the road's private, it's in a binder, it's in a binder and it's in a.
It's not, in, in a couple hours this afternoon, I found out.
The registry search would have disclosed whether, whether the, the street that you were buying was public or not. Whoever ran the titles when you purchased your property or the lender's title, if you didn't get your own attorney, would have been aware of whether the road was accepted or not.
No, not the deeds, it's on the paper.
It's not on deeds, it's a separate document. It's a separate, separate set of documents that would show up in the chain of titles on.
I'd like to see if any of anything at the registry deeds.
That's right, that's, it's a negative. If you can't find something, then the road's not accepted. That's the starting point. Roads are private unless you find the documentation on record that establishes that the process was followed and completed to make the road public. So the absence of those documents establishes that it's a private road.
What's the exact thing that I have to look for at the registry? Is there a special title on the document or something that I have to find at the registry?
I would think running anybody's title that lives on the street, going back, would disclose whether or not the document, I'm telling you right now, they're not there because we know the road has not been accepted. So it's basically just confirming what I'm telling you. The roads, the documents are not there because the road's never been accepted.
So it's the absence of the document?
Right.
Is there a tax difference, like if it's a private road or a public road? No?
So if you're looking for a way forward and Mo'll chime in, but I would think somebody needs to go up the, in terms of the road and determine what its condition is because as roads over a period of time, and I know Mo's talked about this with other town roads, with you in generalities, but over time, they deteriorate if they're not maintained. And at some point, you get down below the layers, moisture's getting down underneath to the subsurface and you're losing the base that the road is laid out on. And when that happens, then you're talking a full-depth reconstruction and you're talking big bucks.
Mark, can, do you know for sure on this particular development, whether the road, I can't tell from what I read, whether the road was constructed originally by the developer to town road standards? Because we have, we have other examples of developers who in order to generally, I think, squeeze an extra lot in that was not in conformance with town regulations, basically say, well, I'll put a road in and that road does not comply with town standards. Either it's too narrow or it's not built to full construction because they, they built it more like a driveway than like a road. And then what happens is the same thing you're saying here is the people who bought the house that they're in from the people who had the house or maybe, you know, two or three or four transactions down that line, people are saying, my road isn't working very well, town come in. And the answer is, well, the developer agreed to develop the road in order to be released from some of the normal restrictions around frontage and things like that. But then people down the road, down the line suddenly say, well, this road needs repair and I don't want to pay for it, but it's like it never was built to town standards. Was this a road that actually was built to town standards or do we know?
I think we would have to check with planning and to see if it was built to the standards of the town.
I've got to say, from my experience, lacking in-house oversight is, because this is one function that a town engineer would have and we haven't had that person. So then you rely upon the planning board's consulting engineers who should have been going out and performing inspections. And certainly, if the road were bonded and bond was released, there should have been a report by the consulting, the planning board's consulting engineer at that time that said, yeah, we've gone up, we've checked out, everything's good to go, or there's a punch list and it's not good to go, the punch list has to be addressed. And so at that point, when the bond's released, that road should have been in a condition, again, this is all hypothetical, but if the bond were released with no holdbacks and that's a determination that the road at that time was built to standards and was ready to be accepted.
Exactly what I was going to say. You guys released the bond.
Well, I'd like to know if this stuff is all true. I'm hearing a lot of stuff that happened thirty years ago.
I've been in town for thirty-four years and I've seen all kinds of little developments going in. I'm sure all the developers had to put up bonds. And when the road was complete, the houses were complete, you released the bond.
And so, and so there should be a legal record of that.
You released the bond for Deerfield Drive, which meant the road was in acceptable condition.
So I, so I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, it would be meaningful to me to see the legal record that confirms that is what happened. Because I'm, I'm asking a more basic question.
I'd like to see the legal documents saying that it's a private road.
There aren't any, that's the point, the default is, you need a legal document that says it's a public road. It doesn't, it's not a default as a public road, a public road has to be accepted. No. If it's happened, if it is a public road, which I actually don't think you're saying it is, at least at the start, Mr. Isaacson, at the start of your statement, you said, let's stop, let's stop arguing about whether it's private or public.
Let's just stipulate that, that it's private, okay? Because we're not going to get anywhere. So Jim, what they're saying is, it starts off as private. It's always private until it becomes public.
Right.
Well, the, except, they released the bond says.
No, that doesn't do it. That doesn't make it, that's not it.
There's other stuff that then it still has.
But the point, but the point, the point is here, right? A lot of things got messed up, a lot of balls got dropped, right? The town dropped balls. I don't know that you would say.
I'm not, I'm not even, well, keep going.
I don't know that the residents, I don't know that you can say what the residents did because I'm not sure what we're supposed to do. But here we are.
Right.
Here we are. So let's figure it out and let's, let's get it to the town where it should be and let's get the sewer to the town where it should be too.
When the bond is released, is it the people who live on the road's responsibility to bring it forth as a public way or is it the developer's responsibility to bring it forth to get it established?
I think it'd be, I think it'd be either one, right?
It's, it's a combined process. Usually, the planning board would alert the town administration that the road was ready to be accepted. I don't, you know, by that point, I'd become town council. I've never seen or heard anything about possible acceptance or eligible for acceptance or anything. And there were a whole bunch of, when I, when I became town council, there were a whole bunch of roads that hadn't been accepted because again, we'd been through one of those boom periods and the town got kind of behind in bringing roads forward. But again, there's this antiquated, archaic statutory process that goes back to the eighteen hundreds that has to be complied with, strictly complied with. The starting point, well, the first issue, as I said, is, is, is the road in a condition in which the, which the town is willing to accept? That's over here, you can discuss that and decide how you want to address it. Legally though, the first step is you have to have an acceptance plan generated. And then it goes from there, then you're just talking a process beyond that.
Going back to your question, and again, I told you I'm an amateur, so this is just me, and any one of you can shoot me down and I would like you to if I'm off, but I look at the question you asked around who has to do it and I'm saying, well, maybe we ought to think about motivations. Generally speaking, it seems to me that a developer who's developing a development, they, they have to put a road in so people can live in the places they're building. The town won't accept a road that's not yet built and confirmed that it's been built to standards, but the developer has no inherent interest in hanging on to a collection of roads that go to houses or, you know, that the developer develops. So there's no incentive for a developer not to want to get the road accepted. By the same token, if, if Mo suddenly picks up another quarter miles worth of road that he has to maintain, that's a compliant town road or, or the sewer system that goes along with it, there's no incentive that we really have not to be willing to take on that incremental responsibility. There's the issue of the cost, that's who's, who's covering the cost for sure, but it's not like anybody doesn't want to accept a road or anybody doesn't want to put a road forward for acceptance. If, if anything, I would think a developer would say, if you don't follow through on that, it makes it harder for you to sell your property because I would think that the initial buyers at least would want to know what's, what's the plan for the, the part that I don't own. So I don't think we're fighting motivations around here. The question to me sounds like it's two pieces. Number one, when you accept a road, it's at the state where it is an acceptable road. So if thirty years ago, this was a road that was designed to be compliant with town standards, the developer built a road that was compliant with town standards, it's beyond me why the developer didn't put it forward for acceptance or having some sort of record that at least the attempt was made and that the town fumbled the ball.
That's where you'd have to know the background of this particular developer.
You have to know the intent of, whether it's supposed to be private in perpetuity or it's supposed to be a town road. So usually if a developer develops a subdivision that's supposed to be a town road, they usually follow through with acceptance. Now, there were rare cases where they, you know, they, they're done with the subdivision and the, they leave and go to other subdivisions to work on and they never get it accepted. So first I guess, find what the intent was for this subdivision in the past.
All of us, that's why. He died, that's why I think he didn't.
Well, one of them did.
Not one of them died. One of the developers passed away, the one that we bought our property from. But the road was thirty years ago, yeah, it was definitely, I can pretty much guarantee you, if somebody went up there, they would send you, it was in compliance because it was great and it had nice curvings, everything. And you can see, I've seen all the records, I read a lot of them. You can see the file of, like, we're leasing this amount of jury for this thing and there's a punch list and these things seem to be done and the developer's like, okay, now I've gone and done those things and there'll be more.
Mr. Sylvia was very strict with them when they were putting in this road because they thought it was his property and he owned the parcel on it. So he was very strict with them when they did the whole development. But it's like, what do you need from us so that you can get this loan? Because, I mean, I realize what you're saying is the fact that the sewer is private, but the sewer is also, that goes up our street, also goes down North Street, Farm Street, which are public. So they have the private sewer under their streets that they pay association dues for also, the same due. So.
Yeah, the only issue I had given, I mean, I guess, if it makes sense to you or if it makes sense to you guys that we're just going to look at a road and we're going to just put our blinders on and only deal with a road, that only makes sense to me if we're not going to be asked as a town to do something about the sewer.
Well, there's been other pumping stations in town that the town has taken over years ago, back when we were trying to.
So you're making my point.
I know, but our big thing right now is, the pumping station is the pumping station, but which has to do with Farm Street, North Street, but all we care about right this second is Deerfield Drive, the road, because we have sinkholes starting in it and everything. And, I mean, we shouldn't have homes going up our street to tell people to go over the other side of the road.
So.
It's the sinkholes.
There's going to be an accident.
So if you.
Someone's going to get hurt.
Well, then the question, it's a private road, so then the question is who's liable for it. But the, the, your request is just give you all the information of what you would have to do to be able to put this road up for acceptance by the town at the next town.
Just the road? What about Mr. Rechner?
See, I'm on your side, but, but that's. Well, and what I'm getting at, so I hear your question. The question is, what would you all have to do to be able to put Deerfield Road up for acceptance by the town? That's, it's, it's a technical question, asking for information. It's not the plan, it's nothing other than that information. And I would think we could get that information, if I'm doing something stupid here, Christine, tell me, stop me, but I'm thinking that technical information about what would you have to do to put your road up for acceptance by the town is just a matter of getting that information laid out. You may not want to go about doing it that way, once you know, you know, if I do this, here's what we have to do and here's what we'll have. You may decide, well, okay, now that we know that piece, now, now we can think about the other piece and that's okay.
We've seen all the paperwork, so I know that because somebody sent me all that, probably, Sarah Poses sent me all that paperwork that we'd have to file, but I guess the question is like, is the road in a condition that.
My guess is no.
The town should.
So first I would petition to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to, to start the process. The Selectmen and the Planning Board would go to the property departments to review the subdivision and then give their recommendations of what it would take for that subdivision to come into compliance.
So, so in this case, let's keep it just with DPW. You would take a look at Deerfield Road.
Yeah.
You would do an engineering assessment of that and say, here's what would have to be done to this road before you can put the road up. So you'll get, you basically would get a scope and an estimate of the cost to bring the road to compliance. And again, I'm, I'm making an assumption that the design of the road. And again, I'm, I'm making an assumption that the design of the road, to start with, was designed to be compliant. But, you'll get some answer and say, here's what it takes, you have to bring the road up to this standard, and then you could do it.
And you would need the acceptance plan and the as-built layout. But from, from our point of view, as, as a department, the idea of, of accepting a road that's not in compliance or not up to standards, it puts the pressure on us to spend money right away, when development, when it's, when it's new, you have that fifteen, twenty years, twenty-five years to plan for maintenance and for replacement. When you get a development that is not up to standards right now, then all of a sudden, two years, you're wiping all of the chapter ninety, all the money that was geared for other developments, it's not being planned.
I was thinking something different, just, I just want to quick, I was thinking something different, that you're going to do the assessment of what needs to be done, and then they would need to do it.
Correct.
So it's not coming out of your chapter ninety five.
No, but what I'm saying is, that's why we go out and review everything.
Okay.
For the, for the, the private development. I'm just saying that we don't have the money to spend on something like that.
And I take issue with that position. Because, this road, thirty years ago, let's, for the sake of discussion, let's assume that thirty years ago, it was compliant to be accepted by the town. Again, I don't know if you think any of the homeowners were the ones that were supposed to do this, but somewhere, that ball was drawn.
Not the town.
And, excuse me?
It wasn't the town. We are not, we are not, we're not the, the sort, the place of last resort. It's, needs to be submitted for acceptance.
The developer at that point, the developer would have had to have an engineer draft the plans and submit them to the town. And that's where there wouldn't have been the incentive, particularly with the developer was not a local developer, who was, had ongoing projects in the town. This was a one-and-out situation, as far as I know. So, it's, it's, it's not insignificant expense to have those plans prepared. And a lot of developers, as much as they may have made on a subdivision, if they can get out without having to prepare those plans, it wasn't something that they were required to bond, although probably they should have, they're out, they're gone. Mo and I have seen this over the years, and, and now you're left with a situation where you're looking at a big price tag just to move the thing.
And what I'm suggesting here is that the town has to share in this, because the town issues permits. The town decides what can and cannot happen. And for the town to allow this, and then for thirty years to act as if, so that every one of us has no idea that we're responsible for it, it doesn't make any sense.
Mr. Isaacson, you're, you're basically saying the town should take responsibility for what you didn't understand about the private property that you own. I, I appreciate, I appreciate that it's not a position that's enjoyable to be in. I'm saying, you're trying to basically say, well, if we have a problem, then it's the town's fault for not having spotted it. I'm saying, no.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, if the town operated for thirty years, cleaning, maintaining, plowing, sweeping, fixing, why would any of us have any inclination?
So you're, you're making a case that we should never have accepted that general law that allowed the town to plow private roads, and to maintain private roads.
And the town initially, right when the road was built, didn't do any of that junk.
It's not our responsibility.
At that time, when the road was in good condition, to.
It's not our responsibility, and just to put some reality into this, we do get calls from people who buy new stuff, who want the town to go after the developer for the quality of installation in their house. We have to explain, no, the town makes sure that the development was developed in accordance with the plan, but you don't come to the town when you have a contractor issue. That's between, that's the transactions between you and the developer. It's a private transaction. The town won't get in to those transactions.
For the house, for my home, I completely agree with you guys, okay? I would never come to the town and say, fix my, fix my broken window.
And why, why not?
That's my property.
Who owns the road?
We thought you did.
I don't care what you thought, I'm saying, who owns, I, I know you thought. You've thought for thirty years, and nothing happened, not you all, but you thought for thirty years. I asked, who owns the road?
Operating as if, as if it was public, you were operating, you were maintaining.
We never have, no, you're, you're suggesting that even though there's a provision for how a road formally and legally gets accepted into the town, you want to pretend that, well, the town, if you start doing anything, that just means you've accepted it. That's A, illegal. It's not, well, I know you don't want to pretend.
We're not pretending.
I'm, I'm, so I disagree with your logic, I guess, and you disagree with mine.
There is a parcel of land in between my home and the Isaacson's, Isaacson's home that is owned by the town. And it blocks the road, and it also has curving. Do they share in the responsibility of the upcoming expenses, because they are part landowners of this private road? There is a large parcel of land right in my front yard, probably about, how far, how wide is this space?
I would say it's probably around fifty feet.
Fifty to seventy-five feet of road curving. Is the town also responsible for adding it to these, or be responsible for some of these costs?
I don't know any town land isn't in Eastman's. For billable waters, I don't know.
I can show you my property, I just bought a very expensive home on a crumbling road, and nothing happens, and I have that.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question I don't have the answer to.
I'll see if I have it.
I mean, partly, as I went through the old documents, there's clear identification of who owns the road. So it's who, it's the, and there's a division of who contributes to the maintenance, this is on the sewer side, who contributes to it based on who's tied in. I guess, I think it's a. Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I'll, I accept, that is a fair question. I don't know the answer to it, and I think it's. And I, I'm giving you all a hard time on the legal side, because I think there's a lot at stake here. I'm coming across harsher than, if we got to a point where we could define the problem, and we could get our arms around the solution, I would be a lot working harder to figure out what's the solution that would make the most sense and is most palatable. I'm just, I'm, I'm making a pretty hard-line legal argument, because I, I don't accept the default that, well, if the town didn't make sure we didn't make this mistake, then it's the town's responsibility, and I'm.
So people have to give money, you know, to help take care of the property.
Okay. Sounded that way, but, okay.
Hi, I'm Will, I'm number twelve, Deerfield, and I'm not a veteran of the road, but since 2015, this is all, this is all new to me at the time. But, as of recent regarding the sewer system, that, you say that's ours, right? Because, but as of recent also, that there's been an issue about the town tapping into it with other developments, tapping into our system, which has been taxing the system, causing, taxing meaning like putting stress on the system, according to Bob Rechner.
That wasn't, that was, so, a, a homeowner came to me, not knowing this was a private sewer system. It was under the town road, we went through all the paperwork, went through all the permits, they tied in. I get a phone call that afternoon, saying that this is a private sewer, that you're not supposed to be tapping into this. We had no idea this was, I mean, I've been here for a short time, this is thirty years, this agreement was made thirty years ago. So, when that was found out, it went to Mr. Rechner, and he collected all the fees. That's what, that's what he had told us, that's what he had told us. So it was.
Twenty-five thousand, and the twenty-five thousand for them to buy into the system, he never got anything.
Okay, well, it.
And they're not even paying their six fifty a year for, to be part of our sewer association.
Okay, well, that was not, that was not a decision that was made because we knew it was a private sewer.
But you shouldn't default to assuming that you should.
Well, you do, but, but, I mean, if it's in a. Right, no, it was a mistake, and we, and we, we went to Bob Rechner, and we straightened it out with him, and he took that over, so.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, from us, he did, he did. No, I, I understand what you're saying.
I can say that there are legal deeds here that have, I don't know whether, I don't think they're unlimited, but there's actually deeds that I read this afternoon that talked about the possibility that if more units could be added, they would tap in. I think it was probably with the idea there was some specific, maybe it's the extension you're talking about, Mark, I don't know. But there was the original set, and then there's something I got in the package that.
Well, of course, the thing is, obviously. It comes out of Deerfield Drive, but it goes up North Street and goes up Farm Street. So there's a whole lot of run to this thing, where it's actually non-subdivision land, where you've got a sewer line going by. So, there was the potential for either individuals, or even open up whole land, including the hunt club, for development, if that, because that line is there. It, as it was done with the legal documents, it was a private sewer main allowed in a, in a public way. Which, I, like I said, to some of you, had I been town council, I would never have gone along with that.
Come on up, Bill.
Hi, Bill Harvey, the chairman of board and water and sewage. This, the aspect of turning over the, the sewer system, the private sewer system to the public, started 2010, predated my tenure on the board. But, Mark Sorrell's counsel at the time, in 2010, was consistent with 2018, advising the board not to consider private sewer mains in the public way. And that's been our position since, and we've, we've had several people come to us and other developers wanting to do something like that. And so we, we've maintained, you know, that policy, you know, since. As an, as an observer to this, there's, you know, things that probably should have happened that didn't happen. And you're, we're realizing it both on the roadside, and then on the, toward the end of life of the, of the wastewater pumping station, and the underground pipes themselves. And then, added to that fact that it's going into a public way, and that may or may not, you know, serve as a means or attractive for developers that are in the area. So, it's, I can appreciate all of, I've heard some of these things before in, in previous meetings, but they're coming together as, as a road urgency, as, as the winter is coming. But the, the sewer is coupled with this situation. I, I can tell you, you know, my belief is that if it turns out that the road needs to be redeveloped, then it would behoove, you know, all parties to redevelop the sewer line that is underneath that road at that time. And then while we're there, you know, finish, you know, what, what we probably have to do in taking over the private aspect of it through the public leg completely. So, that way, the whole thing gets, gets done. Now, that process, I'm not exactly sure how that gets done, because I think the road probably leads the sewer, because the sewer transport system is, is working, notwithstanding the, the accidental connection. But, you know, I, I don't know, and then, as a, as a taxpayer, I ask myself the costs of developing this in its entirety, doing this study, you know, the boots in the ground, the engineering, that people are going to do, you know, testing the road, we're going to drill cores, and they're going to, you know, do, basically, create as-bilts, and see if they are, you know, close to the standards, so that when, when Mo brings his, what, fifteen, twenty-ton machinery down the street, that, that they're going to hold up under there. So, as a taxpayer, I'm not exactly sure who would be responsible for, for footing the bill and bringing that to, to, through the public process. So I don't know the answer to that, I'm just, I'm just a water and sewer guy.
You all would like to see the town take over both the sewer and the road. You both, I'm forgetting, I'm not talking cost here, I'm not talking how you get there, but you both would be on board with the idea that the town would take over the sewer and the road. A fair statement, so in terms, in terms of ultimate endpoint, we have, we have a compatible place that we would.
I would call it a redevelopment. I, I think that, I think, I think, I think a reasonable person sitting back and say, whatever was constructed thirty-five years ago, something has been, the codes have been changed, machinery is different that operates on those roads, hygiene and pump specifications, piping loads, you know, where the frost line is, what they thought thirty years ago, it's different now, you have to dig deeper. So, you know, we're talking about, you know, a redevelopment, not just a transfer, like, let's come in, let's just take it over. It will have to be, most likely, redeveloped. That, that's my, that's my, that's my, you know, just me being boy engineer here.
So, well, so that's getting a little ahead in the process, but let me go ahead and latch on to that. That's, if the owners here were going to maintain the sewer, and I guess the big issue right now is you've got a, a big pumping station issue that has to be replaced, you would probably just replace the, the stuff and, and keep it running, and maybe if pipes blew up at some point, that would be a big deal. But you would just keep running it the way it is. Bill, you're saying that, but if we were, if the town were going to do it now with what we have, we would probably do a more robust type of a design?
I, I don't know about a robust design, I think it would be meeting, whatever the current standards are, yeah. The, the last action, when we interfaced with, with the homeowners in February of nineteen, was that we presented an estimate for what it would take to redevelop the sewer line through the, through, just, actually just, not the line, but the pumping station and the generators and all of those appurtenances that are just there, irrespective of what's underneath the ground. And we, from our discretionary budget, paid for that study to bring, to, for, for that estimated. The, the homeowners, I believe, were not favorably impressed with that estimate, and they thought it could be done less expensively, and they took the action, they were going to take the action of providing another estimate, provided it was from an accredited, you know, engineering company. And that's, that's about where it sort of stopped, and that's also about where it stopped in 2010, according to the records that I read.
So, what I'm, what I'm, where I'm trying to take this, and I'm trying to find the right balance bet, between taxpayers and you guys and where you're at, is if there's some rational way, we could start with the total cost of doing things the way that water and sewer would do them, and partly I'm thinking to be part of a sewer system that others could tap into down the road, and would basically be designed to town industrial strength standards, and somehow differentiate what the total cost of that is from what the cost of a more narrow, narrow-minded, not dumb, but narrow-minded, narrow, more narrowly focused effort that homeowners might pay for to simply keep their system running. And if we said, well, this is what the homeowners, if we were just doing nothing new, we're just keeping it going, it would be this cost. But if we're going to do what we should do, it'd be this much more, so that if we get to a point where we have a discussion, we can kind of differentiate what portion of this would be the homeowners' inherited liability for the system that they had, and it's just, it's an opportune time.
Yeah, I, I think, and I know what you're getting at, you're looking at, like, you're trying to get your arms around part of this problem, part of the scope, you know, eighty, ninety percent of it, eighty, ninety percent of the costing, and sort of get that going. I think it gets back a little bit to who bears the burden of hiring those, those companies and those people to do that work. In other words, to be the developer, or the re-developer of this infrastructure, which is currently being used in, in overlaid fashion, okay? We're asking to say, okay, forget if that is overlaid, how would you design it? And then what would that look like? Someone has to bear that cost.
Right.
And that needs to be in, that sort of pre-development stuff is not in the sewer enterprise fund. We don't have a business development line item budget to go out and do development work for future customers. We're used to having developers come in and say, we've gone through the development process, we've designed a sewer system according to, to the codes, and that, when the town accepts that, then we, provided that we have the capacity and that part of the note of our system, that we accept, you know, we sign off on those developments as well. This is, this is something different, where it's already been developed, and we're asking, you know, with x-ray vision, to look inside, what's there and see how much can be used, or what needs to be replaced before it's. or what needs to be replaced before it's, before it's turned over. Unfortunately, it's, you know, it's 35 to 40 years old, so, you know, we're not starting, as Mo said, with something that's brand new, that does meet codes, and we are, we have line of sight to the useful life for each of those components in that infrastructure. A reasonable person would say, well, it's some reasonable fraction past its, its useful life. And that isn't like taking over a brand-new thing because there's implied that, you know, there's already, well, there's a road, the road already has to be repaired, that's already part of that. And the association has not put that money into that, they thought that maybe if it was the town, but either way, it, 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 someone has to, someone has to, someone has to own the scope, someone has to have budgetary authority to do, to do the work that, to answer the questions that, that you're looking for, I believe. And that's me talking as a taxpayer.
So, good. Keep talking as taxpayer, but, so there's an up, I think what I heard you say is there's an upfront piece that the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, Sewer Enterprise Fund doesn't have even a budget item to support. And I'm just brainstorming, this is brainstorming, this is not negotiation. If, say, the homeowners paid for that upfront piece that's not in a budget line item in the Sewer Enterprise Fund, but the money that they spent to do that was credited, you know, accounted as a credit toward the total project, that would, and there'd probably still be some cost of total, okay, there's, there's going to be a legal reason I can't do this.
No, no, that's what we were in 2018.
Okay.
We left off with Mr. Rechner.
Okay.
It was the issue, we were talking, what, $10,000, $20,000 to do an engineering study?
Right.
And...
I mean, right now, do you guys, for the, for the sewer side, you must have a reserve fund? Is that...
We have more for people on Farm Street today.
Okay.
I don't know what the balance is.
You don't?
It's not, it's like $50,000, I heard.
So my, where, where I'm coming from is if we got to a point where there was a clear understanding of how this responsibility was going to be passed, you might have more flexibility to use some of that reserve fund to fund the stuff that he doesn't have a budget item lined for. And that doesn't necessarily have to be a showstopper, is all I'm...
So our estimate in 2019 that Bill referred to was about $405,000 to replace the pump station at that time.
Okay. That's for the full, that's the full project?
That's just, no, that's just the pump station.
Just replacing the pump station.
That's nothing underneath the ground.
How much, how much was it? I'm sorry.
Four oh five, a hundred thousand.
Right. And so...
Because it's, it's, aside from it's beyond its useful life, the technology, as I understand it, is archaic, the whole upgrade, everything. And unfortunately, you can only assume between then and now that it's gone up that much more. And oh, by the way, if the town had to do it, you'd have to add a factor to that because then you're talking bidding it under public construction law and prevailing wage, which would raise the price probably a third beyond what it would cost to do it privately.
So let's call that, those questions are tactical. Those are how do we, you know, if we knew, if we knew what we were trying to do, and we had a reasonably good estimate of what it costs to do it, then we could get into discussions about who pays what, what's the best way to go about doing it to make it work, and how does that distribute out? We're not there yet, I'm, I'm exploring some ideas of what we could do. But if, if, you know, if it boils down to, well, it's better off for the Homeowners Association to buy the pump because you don't have to do the stuff that Mark is talking about, and you can get it cheaper, you know, we, I would think we could find a way to structure the project to where you could do it a smart way, I guess is what I'm getting at.
So I just, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting from the other point, which is the street acceptance.
Yeah.
And I just confer with Mo, neither he nor any of his staff have been up there recently to actually view the road. So I'm suggesting that they take it upon themselves to do that and then report back to you as to what is sense, you know, is it possible to just do a patch job to get us at least through the coming winter, allow the plowing to continue, we've at least bought some time to continue these discussions.
Okay, we'd like to be okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all trying to find goodwill passages.
At least answers the mail for six months or something.
Somebody was up the street from the town a couple weeks ago that was going to have a bad hole cover. When they were taken in.
There's a lot of trucks on our street that take breaks up there too many. We haven't really...
We do have police there a lot to catch the kids from the street, which I love, like, I'm all for catching kids. I mean, that would be, that would be great. I'm, I'm personally, I mean, all of this is a huge issue, and I know it bothersome to all of us, and it is complicated, I understand that. And the pressing issue for a lot of us right now is, is will the flowers, will the emergency be able to get up the road if anybody needs it? That's, that's the thing that we're most worried about.
Well, like what I was talking to Mark, I mean, we could go and do an assessment as long as the selectmen agree that we can go in there to try to help the situation, but understand that we're not, we're not committed to, to do, oh, we need this done, we need this done, we need this done.
So would you then report back to us about what it would take?
Yeah, I'm guessing you guys are going to show up a bunch more times before this thing's figured out.
Every week. Are you going to look and see what needs to be done?
Well, on the, on the other side, on the other, for the winter first.
Okay.
And then, and then if, if it comes down to that, you petition the board to go for acceptance, and if it's considered by the board, we would go in there to review the subdivision to see what the improvements are needed.
Can we get those required for the...
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing because it's been said a couple times.
It's not acceptance by the board. The board then takes it to town meeting, and it's acceptance by town meeting. I just, I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. It doesn't stop here, unfortunately.
Yeah, and also with...
Documents on what it would take to get it up.
I think that's what they're going to, yeah, I think you should have that.
Even, even, even the extension of sewer service greater than 400 feet additional has to go to town meeting.
Joe, I clarified a little.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, I clarified that today. I'm sorry, we didn't have a chance to catch up on that, sorry. Yes, nope, that does not.
So Mo's going to assess, or your department's going to assess the road to make, to take a look at what needs to be done to get it through the winter. Christine or probably Sarah is going to forward...
I have a copy of it here, if somebody wants to take it.
So if somebody can grab a copy of what it takes to get a road accepted, so you know what that's going to look like. Bill, is there anything on the sewer side that makes sense to try to, is a next step between, you know, maybe theirs, next step, but is there something that...
I, I, well, as of right now, it's still a, a private system, so I don't, I don't know what else to say.
Should they get, should they get the pump? Like, I'm not sure whether the, we know that you need to replace the pump, but I don't know if that means, like, it sounds like you need to replace it in 2018, here we are in 2022, and unless your toilets are all backed up, apparently the pump's working, so...
Yeah, he's very good about the maintenance of it and everything. Mr. Rechner's been taking care of it for eons, and he's, yeah, he's retiring, and he's very good about the maintenance on it, keeping up to date on everything.
So who will pick up for him?
We don't know.
I also think if we're going to have a discussion about the sewer system, we should invite everybody that's...
That's fine, but what I, in, what I read, when the managing owner resigns, it's up to the owners to find a replacement. I don't think this is all going to get fixed unless he's, he's announced his retirement 10 years ahead of time.
Is there actually an association, an association document for...
Yes, there is.
For the sewers.
It's the Castle Hill Association.
For the sewer system. Okay, okay.
It's the Castle Hill, and he does, he did it all for free, he volunteered his time and everything, and I worked with him on a project when we were taking care of the building for our home, and, you know, getting documents to help him out and stuff for it. So it, it's a lot of work, but yeah, whoever would take it over would be taking it over just as a...
Private contractor, probably.
Yeah.
So what's confusing here is, Ross, this...
Deerfield is actually, it's up on a hill. So you, you would think, you know, gravity and all that, but actually what, the way the sewer system works, the nearest point of the, is, we're up on Blacksmith.
I, I believe...
So there's a major dip on Farm Street anyway. So this actually, this pump station is actually pushing it to get it up high enough to hit Blacksmith.
Oh, wow.
But so it's force main, and at that point, it turns into a force main.
Right.
Gravity line from Deerfield towards force main up north.
So it just flows naturally down, but when it gets to the pump station, it gets pushed up that hill on Farm Street.
To Blacksmith.
Right.
Where it turns to gravity.
So that's how it works. And it's, it's running by a lot of private property.
Mark, there's one other thing I read in here, I'm just going back to that comment about the $25,000 that wasn't paid. There's a provision in one of these early deeds that the managing owner, except I don't know if it transferred beyond the developer as managing owner, can put a lien on the property.
It's not that property that they're talking about is, is not within that subdivision. It actually, there was potential litigation, it was apparently the, the person that bought the property on Farm Street, I think it was.
Yeah.
Got an attorney and, and pushed back on Mr. Rechner, and I don't know where it went at that point, but it, at that point, it was poised for litigation, and that's when I thought they had come to terms on agreed figures and worked it out, because I didn't hear anything more about it until tonight.
Yeah, the board's never heard anything since that, that time either. I remember there was, there was a budget of $50,000 that the association had, and that there was a figure of 20 to 25 as a connection, part of that, and I think maybe that disparity of what was in the balance and what the buy-in was probably the source of the lack of agreement, I guess. I don't know, but I never heard, we never heard anything else from that.
And then it's 65, $650 a year, and he hasn't paid his 2,500, I mean, his 25,000, and he hasn't been paying his 650 a year either.
Right. And nobody, yeah, who can go after...
Mr. Rechner worked with an attorney to try to go after him, and I guess he got all kinds of pushback from their attorney, wouldn't get returned phone calls or anything, because I made the comment to him, why not just put a lien on the property?
Well, it's either lien or it's, it's, it's actually, it's actually private trespass.
So what, which, basically you'd have to go to court and get some relief from a judge. You don't, that's not a leaning-type situation.
Now, it would be a trespass.
Something like, what's been connected can't be disconnected?
Oh, my God, that would be funny. No, I mean, I mean, honestly, if it, if it wasn't done, if it technically was private...
Well, even that, I mean, that's a public health issue, this, we're talking sewer, so, even if you, even if you could, but basically, basically you'd have to go to court, get it, get some kind of relief from a judge in the form of an attachment against the property or in order to do it, which is an injunction, but...
So Mo, when, when you connected, I'm thinking it was a public line.
Yep.
Usually when people join, get a sewer system, they get, there's an assessment. So is there a dormant assessment for, at the time that you thought there were, you were connected to a public line, connection fee?
I believe there's stubs, when there's a stub going to a property.
Yep.
That, that betterment had already been paid, if there's a stub, but being a private development, that didn't, that didn't...
There never would have been a betterment because it was private.
Right. But again, it was, it was a, where I come from, it's...
I think, I think the activity by the association alerted the town soon enough that something like that would have been builder collective.
I have the feeling we've carried this conversation as far as we can tonight.
I still am scared.
I don't know, I know, but, but I'm looking forward to you coming back.
Learn a lot.
We can go to Noon Hill and continue this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
We would have made more progress that way, I'm sure.
I've got to take off.
Okay, so, I've learned a lot. I think we have a few steps to move forward. I think we've addressed, or I hope we've addressed, the wintertime immediate hazard. We won't worry about whether it's inside the limits or outside the limits, we'll just take care of that for sure. That gives us some more time to try to figure this thing out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mo could have a report to you on the current conditions up there by next week's meeting.
Excellent. So some of you might even want to come back? Same, same time, same place, same station?
Will you let us in the door?
All depends what Mo has for news.
We'll be out there some time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So I'm assuming guts that we're not making any repairs until we report back, correct?
If you, if you come back in a week, yeah, that would be okay, unless, unless you know about a snowstorm, we don't.
They'll, they'll keep open till December anyways, so we'll be able to get it.
I mean, if there's something, if there's something that's about to blow up, Mo, use your judgment.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say, it's just a call by Mo.
All right, uh, let's see, next we had, oh, Mo's still here, yeah. You weren't even here for this. This was just a, just a coincidence. Okay, Mo Guley, Director of Public Works, to discuss the following. Request the Board of Selectmen to award the primary bidder of rock salt, solar salt, and treated salt to Eastern Minerals, Inc. Request the Board of Selectmen sign the contract with Eastern Minerals, Inc. as a primary supplier of salt from October 25th, 2022 through October 25th, 2023. Request the Board of Selectmen to award the secondary bidder of rock salt, solar salt, and treated salt to Morton Salt Company. Request the Board of Selectmen sign the contract with Morton Salt Company as a secondary supplier of salt from October 25th, 2022 through October 25th, 2023. Let's do the salt first, then we'll do the mattresses, how's that?
Sure.
One mattress and salt and one salt.
Funny guy.
So I just wanted to make a comment that we do use the primary bidder for all our rock salt until if they can't perform, we use a secondary bidder. So the, most of the time, we will not use a secondary bidder, but we just want to have that contract in place.
Can you do this every year, so?
Yes.
You know about salt, anybody have questions?
No.
Nope.
Nope, no questions, can we, or can we vote on all four of those at once, just to, so I can get a motion to...
We're just waiting for the award and the, and the contract in each case.
Okay, so then we'll do two. So the first would be a motion to award the primary bidder of rock salt as stated to Eastern Minerals and to sign the contract with Eastern Minerals as the primary supplier of salt.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carry. Second is going to be a motion to request the Board of Selectmen award the secondary bidder of rock salt and all of the different salts to Morton Salt and to sign the contract with Morton Salt as a secondary supplier.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, both motions carry. Now, the, anything you want to tell us about the Green Mattress Recycling LLC contract?
Yes, so, so Mass DEP has made mattress, mattresses a waste ban item, so they cannot be put onto the tip floor and put out as solid waste. They need to be recycled. With that being said, starts November 1st, we have to have a recycling back like we did when Mass DEP was paying for it. Now, unfortunately, we have to put the cost over to the, to the taxpayers who get rid of their mattresses. This Green Mattress Company is willing to do it for $35 per piece, it's going to be per mattress and per box spring, so if it's mattress and box spring, it'll be $80. So we, we do encourage anybody who buys a mattress...
Seventy dollars or eighty dollars?
I'm sorry?
Seventy or eighty?
No, it's $40.
I'm sorry?
He said 35.
It's, it's 35, but with the transportation fees, it came to $40.
Oh, okay, got it, okay.
I'm sorry, I should have specified that.
Okay.
So, but, so that would be cost per piece, and the contract, you know, we, we do recycle them 50 at a time in our, at the transfer station, and then they'll come up and they'll pick up each one of the containers for that, and it's a $400 charge for transportation. They go to Millbury now instead of Milford. It was a lot cheaper when it went to Milford, but now they're going to Millbury, so...
In the write-up, it was, we actually go through 133 mattresses a month?
Sometimes, depends, it depends on the, the time of year, it depends.
I was going to say...
Yeah.
Yeah. Sometimes it's more.
Okay.
So...
All right. Any questions?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Who owns the container into which the mattresses go?
We own the container down at the transfer station.
Okay. That's it for me.
All right, I don't have any questions other than that, that one. Motion?
Move to award the, or sign the contract with Green Mountain Recycling LLC.
Green Mattress Recycling.
Oh, Green Mattress, yeah, in accordance with the materials.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries, okay.
I do want to make one comment before I go? I'm sorry, I know.
You have a question for me?
No, we have, we have, we're going to have, start having gate attendants at the transfer station and not having police details down there. They're going to be able to do the mattresses right there in charge form at the, at the gate. And they'll be giving information to, to the residents on everything about the transfer station, our guys will be checking stickers, things like that.
These guys going to be like bouncers?
No, no, they're just there for friendly conversation.
Okay, okay.
How would they feel about doing something like that before Thanksgiving? Just asking for a friend. I'm asking for a new friend.
We could do an interview process. We could test them out the day before Thanksgiving. Uh, where, just, where do they come, where do these attendants come from?
Um, there's one from Medfield, one from Milis, that we hired.
Just Pete, citizen, are they citizens or?
They're part-time employees.
Part-time employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And they're gung ho, ready to go.
Okay.
But they'll have nothing to do with the trash compactor. If that starts to get backed up, no one's gonna run to them and get them going.
No. Thank you.
Thanks, Mo.
They don't, they don't, they wouldn't consider patrolling the state hospital for a dog walk, dog leashes.
Not in the description.
Thanks, Mo.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, should we jump to Gene just because?
I think so.
Gene, we'll go to you first. Request by Gene Minio to utilize B-27 for storage during chapel innovation, renovations. Probably innovative renovations, but renovations.
Tell, tell them why you need space.
And what is B-27?
So that building, that's the food service building at the hospital, the low, nonhistoric one in the middle?
The newer one.
With the loading docks.
Oh.
And you just need it for this winter. We were talking about this past weekend.
This doesn't interfere with Trinity?
No, so we fortunately are the recipient of a state grant to do the remediation in the chapel, which we'd like to get done before the spring season of programs happens. So that just means taking everything we currently have stored in the chapel and the outdoor stage and putting it someplace else for the winter.
So it's just storage?
Yep.
So have you, I'm not sure you needed to, but have you talked to Trinity at all about, I don't know why they would object?
No, and they don't, they don't own the property yet, so it's, I did not think they need.
Okay, so there's no issues there, and it's not interfering with them in any way?
Nope.
No, and this is great, because then you, they can jump right in and start.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And I, I would have put it under consent agenda, because I didn't think any of you would have an issue, but I wanted Gene to have a chance to talk about how great this grant is.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Well, I didn't expect that.
I did.
May need access to the building, where the stuff is stored.
It's fine.
And you want to do it like starting this weekend, you want to jump right on it, right?
We're gonna move, we'd like to move everything Saturday.
Yeah.
Before it snows.
Weather forecast by Gene.
The snow talk. I don't know who you people are.
Gene's raising the bar on how early it's gonna snow this winter.
Yeah.
Uh, do we need a formal motion?
I think you need a vote to allow access.
I'd move to permit the Belleforge Art Center to store materials in building B-27.
Second then.
All those in favor?
For what period of time?
Till it stops snowing.
Till we, I think if we said till we, till we sell the property is probably a safe outward, outward.
Hopefully, we're done at the end of March, but if things slide, it could be a problem.
They're gonna want to bring it back out next spring, so.
Yeah, sooner the better.
My, my computer just shut off, and I still see a head over there, but it's not moving. That's a good, that's not bad. I like that picture. Let's keep that screenshot there. Okay.
I would just suggest you see, like, April 1st or something, if you needed more time, you could come in then.
When the remediation schedule, schedule?
We would hope it would be January through March, but we have to go out to public bid first.
May 1st might be better.
I was gonna say.
Say May 1st.
You'd never do anything April 1st.
Yep.
So we'll go for May 1st.
Sure, thank you.
And I'll take the motion in the second as revised.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. You got it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Gene. You, you all did a great job this summer. All right. Uh, let's see, now, good backup, Boards and Committees accept the resignation of Blake McDermott from the Planning Board.
Do we need to vote that?
Uh, yes, you vote to accept it.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes. Next one, a Board of Selectmen vote to sign memorandum of understanding with Medfield Police League, M C O P Local 257 dated October 19th, 2022. This is the agreement between the police union and the town to, to at least on a six-month basis, adopt a 12-month, 12-hour, two-day, 12-hour kind of shift rotation. So people, people that are on this, two shifts, one from, let's see if I get this all right, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, the other one from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And basically, people would be on for two days, 12 hours each day, two days off, and kind of work back and forth that way.
The maximum would be 16 if they had to add four on.
Right.
Which is similar to what it is now.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's, it's gonna be a voluntary thing on the officers to bid for those shifts. Some people apparently don't want them, so they'll stick on the regular shifts. So moved.
I know a lot of associations are doing this. This is good. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Can I just, since you're talking about boards and committees, what's going on with the safety committee? We've been sort of dancing around.
In next week.
Pardon?
Next week.
Next week.
Oh, good.
Let's see, Bill's the only one here. Citizen comment?
Gene is still here.
You didn't use the microphone at all tonight?
Consent, consent agenda, two items. Block party requests for Long Meadow Road between Stony Brook and Woodfall Roads on October 31st from 4:30 to 5:30 PM. And food cupboard requests to post sandwich boards at the usual locations advertising their food drive on election day for the two weeks prior to the election at the intersection of Route 27 and South Street and the intersection of North and Main Street and the Medfield Transfer Station. And motion to approve the consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we had the September 7th, 2022, and September 13th, 2022, meeting minutes. I think we deferred from our last meeting.
So 13, I'm good with, 7, I checked with Brittany today, those are being revised because there are a lot of comments missing.
Okay.
No, I mean, more could be added.
So that's being revised. Pete, are you in good shape on the 13th?
I'm fine on both of them at this point.
Then I think all we're doing is taking a motion to approve the September 13th, 2022.
So moved then.
All right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Uh, September 13th meeting, meeting minutes are approved. Town Administrator update.
Uh, let's see, I have a few things. Just a reminder that next week's meeting is also at the library. Next week's meeting's at the library.
I have to tie a string around my finger or something.
Um, I am holding office hours tomorrow from 9:30 to 11:30 at Blue Moon, if anybody wants to stop by and say hello or have a chat. We have a department head meeting on Thursday. We have a team building workshop that we'll be conducting in the morning. Unfortunately, we had booked that before I knew that Tri County was doing an update on the school construction project, so Michael LaFrancesca is attending on behalf of Jeff and I to go to that. Let me see, what else we have? Early voting is going well. We had one minor glitch when we came in on Monday. The elevator had stopped working, so we are accommodating, the town clerk is accommodating anybody who needs, would like to do early voting and needs the elevator, can come in the front door, and she'll take you at the town clerk's office on the first floor. We are hoping it will be fixed tomorrow morning.
I thought she was gonna do a fireman's carry or something.
Yeah.
I was looking if things wouldn't work out well in many terms.
And I think, oh, and just a reminder from the public health nurse, you can still register for COVID vaccine through her office and all the information's on the Board of Health website.
Great. Uh, next meeting dates, next week, November 1st, two weeks later, November 15th. And then in December, again, it's 1st and 3rd Tuesdays, December 6th and December 20th, Selectmen reports.
All right, so I saw that your, you posted the, your monthly.
Oh, the town administrator update.
Love that, looks good. Hope people know it's right there, right on your page. Attended Gene's season-ending Belleforge Oktoberfest event, which is fantastic. Just so happy. Those guys had a great season, nice turnout, all good. I'm sure you guys saw the invite for the additional Eagle Scout ceremonies coming up. I want to say the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So, so you got the email from that as well, so we, we can have the, was it proclamation, declaration, whatever? So we've got one for the weekend of the 19th, and then three the following week.
Okay.
And then I also, I got the invite for the Veterans Lunch at the Senior Center for November 10th, so I'll be going to that. And other than that, that's.
Good. Pete?
Went to a sustainable Medfield event that was Medfield Energy, whatever it's called, M E A, environmental action, I guess, and the Energy Committee seemed to be behind doing a social, nice event at Seventh Wave, and Medfield Foundation had a meeting, and that's it.
And I had one citizen meeting to discuss issues in schools. We had an OPEB Zoom meeting. Basically, there's about once a year we do an OPEB meeting, but, or maybe twice a year. And the main point of the meeting is to take a look at the performance of the, of the trust fund in the prior year and prepare a short presentation for the Selectmen, so I think my past story's on the agenda for next week to present that. So we'll be able to do that, and then that gets posted to the website. I tell, you both know, because I, or you all know, because I sent you the email. The Mass Municipal Association had a charter change webinar that I thought was interesting. They had four guest speakers from various towns, just talking about alternative forms of government beyond the open meeting. I was talking to Christine, joking about the fact it was interesting, all these town managers and former town managers all seem to prefer town forms of government that vest more autonomy and authority in those town managers, so I thought that was interesting. And I also, I met with the town moderator on an extended walk around the state hospital to discuss town issues, and especially, we were trying to get together on the school building committee, how things were going, what we were doing to kind of coordinate that. I also got invited to the Veterans Day thing, and I'm planning to go there, but I haven't told Ron Griffin that yet, but I'll plan to be there.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
See, well, what you said, as I'm sure you're all aware, the A G in fact did approve the bylaw.
Yeah, I was gonna say the.
The school building committee is by law, but do you have any idea what the sensitivity on the food, food?
The pantry, food pantry?
Food pantry bylaw is?
Yeah, ironically, it's, she's viewing it as an attempt to regulate what would otherwise be an exempt charitable use under 48, Section 3. And I pointed out, well, yeah, but they don't all go all the way through to get that status, and so this is an attempt to try and help them out. So she was kind of mulling that over.
Huh.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay. That's all I have. Anybody have anything else?
No. Move to adjourn.
All right.
You have a second to?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We're closed.